Leave Bush.
Did they're damn.
Uh, no, it come down, it washed out. It come down on me. Oh, took out my fence. Oh, man. Somebody sent me this picture.
This is Haco Lake.
Yeah. All those blue ducks, yeah.
Somebody said they had a wherever it was, they had a boat, a water road and it crashed the boat and the top of the boat house broke.
And their boats is all down, they're all scattered all up there.
Yeah, 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 I feel like, yeah.
I don't doubt it.
All right, Mr. Chief. We're ready?
Oh, yeah.
You ready?
I'm ready.
So the July twenty twenty five meeting of the Almanzt County Planning Board come to order? Have you got the road?
Yes, sir. We have a forum to conduct business.
Okay. Everybody had a chance to look over the minutes? Questions, Will?
Question to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Hall in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Takes care of the minute. We don't have anybody sign up for public comments. So we got none to respond to. We got some old business.
Yes, sir. So as a couple of you have mentioned before we got started here, this is basically the culmination of what we've been working on for the past several months, I guess, that um, we were kind of instructed to go down this path in September of last year. I think I started kind of presenting to you guys a rough outline of my thoughts in October and November. And I think we did meet a couple of times because of Christmas and maybe sickness or something like that, but basically we had looked at one or another of the aspects of what's under the whole business there. Once, twice, or sometimes three times um, over the past several months. So as we talked about at the last meeting, what we've got for you is really a staff recommendation. The way that I think about it is a staff recommendation in consultation with the planning board. That is short of an official motion to say, yes, we want to go ahead and and revise the ordinance. And the reason we do, we're doing that is we want to give the commissioners flexibility when it gets to them. They can say, we like this, let's move forward. They can say, we're not really sure, let's do some additional modifications. Or they could say, we don't like this at all and we want you guys to start over. But the flexibility for them to do that is only going to come, or really going to come with a staff recommendation. If it went the official recommendation route, then they would have to have a public hearing and they would have to make a decision soon thereafter.
So this, so when this goes to county commissioners, there will be no public hearing or just be a, just an item, a agenda item to, for discussion?
Just a discussion item with a presentation, just kind of a summary presentation is what we're envisioning. Obviously they'll have access to the documents. But we don't expect them to dig into seventy seven pages with the documentation because that could obviously, you know, take a while. That's something that maybe we, they would, if they want to go forward, they would dig into the public hearing or multiple meetings, but a staff recommendation is much more kind of abbreviated.
Okay.
All right. So I'm just going to go through these one by one in a similar fashion to the way that we have in previous meetings. Um, and I'll go through as their bullet pointed under the old business there with the rural preservation ordinance and then the map and then the subdivision and then the definitions. What the, the summary changes that I'm going to report to you tonight are changes that are different from how you saw this last time. So for example, if there's any changes to the map, I would say, you know, this district is changed in X, Y, Z fashion. If there's no changes, I'll say no change. So again, these changes are just changes to what you've seen previously. All right, starting with the rural preservation ordinance. So in the index, the official map section has been relocated to five point four. We moved this up in the document just for organizational purposes. You kind of have authority and then jurisdiction and then the map creates the districts. So we thought it made better sense for the flow of the orders for the districts to come after the map. Sections five point one, five point two, and five point three, no change from the previous version that you saw back in eight. Five point four, no change to the text. This is simply relocated from section five point eight. Section five point five relocated from five point four. There's really no change here other than the inclusion of the family subdivision option, and that's something that we talked about uh, last year in the agricultural district. I'll get into that in more detail when I get to the subdivision ordinance later. The only other minor correction here is that the lot size for the cluster subdivisions in the ag district should be fifteen thousand square feet as opposed to eight thousand square feet. So that's a little bit of a typo on my part. We're going to make sure that those are uniform and so that if you're looking at the subdivision ordinance or you're looking at this one, it's about to say fifteen thousand square feet for the rural um, cluster, or the ag district cluster subdivisions. All right, section five point six. In the mill village districts, we added a little bit more detail here. In particular, we have more specific development standards. And that's in subsection five point six point three point two. Sean, are you able to bring that up? It's passed off the images.
Five point six, say again, Matthew. Five point six, what?
Five point six point three point two.
Three.
Better than us, too. Okay. So this section basically says if a property sits along the sidewalk section as depicted in the Burlington Graham Metropolitan Planning Organization's twenty fifty master transportation plan, then they have to abide by these setbacks. Right? So only if they are in the sidewalk plans. And I should probably mention that to you as well. Maybe not breaking news, but a little bit of news is we've been working with the Burlington, the VGMPO to get sidewalks into their big picture transportation plan for Saks Palau and for a couple of other unincorporated areas in the county. The plan, those plans have to be part of their plan in order to be prioritized and ultimately funded by the NC DOT. So sidewalks and Saks Palau are now part of the master plan projected for twenty fifty. Doesn't mean they will happen, but it means it's eligible to happen. So all this is saying is if the development is along the property that abuts those sidewalks, these are the setback standards. Does that all make sense? I know it's kind of
unique situation, but yeah.
A lot of moving parts, but basically what we're trying to do is to say if we're going to have future sidewalks in this area, we want to reinforce the fact that we're going to have uniformity and a sameness of development patterns in those small mill villages. Yeah. All right.
I imagine these setbacks are greater where they, but as opposed to the others.
What, what, what's unique here is you have minimums and maximums. So they can't be, we're trying to encourage a situation where like a commercial storefront, for example, is relatively close to the sidewalk, similar to the developments that you already had in those areas.
Okay.
All right, finally, section five point seven. In subsection five, seven, three. We added a lot more detail to the special use permitting approval and denial processes. In five point seven point four, we added much more detail to accessory uses like home based businesses and home occupations. I remember those conversations that we had.
Oh, yeah.
And then finally, in subsection five point seven point five, there's a lot more detail on these uses that are permitted with additional regulations. So the table of uses has that PA designation for certain uses. Those are the ones that are permitted with additional regulations. Those include things like airports, temporary fairgrounds, and family care homes. So again, based on the last time we discussed this, those aren't the changes now versus the last time we looked at this. Any questions on that? All right, moving on to the land unit now. No changes here from the last time that you guys considered this. If you might recall, probably the biggest change from the initial review, the secondary review was the rural community districts in orange and shrinking those down a lot more to just right in around those rural crossroads. And some other tweaks to the um, the transitional districts, but since you last looked at this, there's no additional change to the map. All right?
Okay.
Any questions about the map? All right, moving right along to the subdivision ordinance. Section six point nine point one. No changes here from the previous version. Six point nine point two. Um, in this section, so subsection six point nine point two point three was relocated from the section on environmental regulations. It didn't really make sense there because this is just more of a generalized um, uh, piece of instructions on uh, filing with the register of deeds. So we just thought it made a lot more sense to be under the application of regulation. So the text hasn't changed. We just shifted it from one section to another.
Current terminology there? What are you reading about? I mean, does the register of deeds file a plat? Or does the individual file a plat? They report it?
So that's basically instructing the register of deeds that unless uh, if it needs to be signed off on by the county.
I'm saying the word file.
Yes.
The wedzers, the register of deeds shall not file a plat. I did not think that's the correct verb for that because I didn't think the register act, the registrar actually filed it. They recorded, right? And the individual that brings the map files it? Or is that, I mean, is that a legal schmiggle?
I want to say that that language is taken directly from state law, but I think you, I mean, I think you have a good good nuanced point there.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not, I'm not the legal.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm about a hundred percent confident we just took that directly from state law.
All righty then. Bang them all the night about legal schmiggle stuff.
All right, sections six point nine point three and six point nine point four. No changes to these sections. Section six point nine point five, this is variances and appeals, if I remember correctly. We removed the third sentence of part A because it instructed the board of adjustments to consider subjective items that are not just facts on a potential variance case. So previously it says the board of adjustments shall take into account um, something like is the, is the use in harmony with the surrounding area and I think maybe there's something about job creation or economic impact or something like that. Board of adjustment is quasi judicial. They're not supposed to consider anything other than the black and white facts of the case. So I'm not sure how, why that language was in there, but it was just a subjective instruction for them as opposed to just the objective fact. So we removed that. And then part B, we simplified the section to simply reference the state law with regards to appeal procedures. Next three sections, six point nine point six, point seven, and point eight. No changes at all to these sections. In section six point nine point nine, we included that streams, uh, the, uh, portion on streams, which is six point nine point nine point five. So here we clarify that stream buffer will be considered marginal land in the same fashion as similar land types um, when calculating lot size. Six point nine point ten. So here in the subsection for dead end public roads, which is point two, dead end public roads, yep. We clarified that the width standards apply to the travel surface of the road. That is in the yeah, the travel surfaces, the, the, since they're right before the, right before the uh, the, the bars. Uh, under class one private roads, we revised item three to simply reference the state law that governs flights as related disclosure statement. So we have a, a line in here that said something about how um, the county shall ensure that basically as lots are transferred along a private road, that the private road disclosure statement goes from property owner to property owner, but we have no way of knowing that in the planning department. If it's a private sale between individuals, if the lot's on a private road, we have another way of guaranteeing that. But that provision is already addressed under state law. Six point nine point eleven. So these are the types of subdivisions. The biggest change here is the return of the family subdivision. Uh, go up just a little bit, yeah, from the minimum lot size. So this would be limited to four lots, four new lots uh, intended for direct family members and the minimum lot size here would be one acre. Um, part of this came about because Tom, who's not here tonight, you know, Tom is a senior planner for the town of Hillsborough. And he basically said legally, he thinks it's a little questionable to have, this was two acres for a minor subdivision. Then legally, it's a little bit questionable to have one lot size standard for major subdivisions and a different lower lot size standard for minor subdivisions. But there is precedent in other counties that they allow for a family subdivision. So we would limit that to four lots simultaneously divided and we have a definition of who counts as a direct family member for those family subdivisions.
Uh, under that description, I guess the next section, section, what is it? Six point nine point twelve.
Yep.
Of exclusive of marginal lane.
Marginal lane.
Okay, so.
Does it say lane?
It does, yes, sir.
Okay, and where is that again?
That's in set, that's in the family subdivision section, see in the next, in the next subsection.
Let me make a note to correct that. I appreciate you. Um, we also moved the furnaces width requirements for cul-de-sac lots from the bottom of the table. The item two in the section just below. So there was a couple of asterisks there that describe um, width standards for cul-de-sac lots. We just simply moved that down to the, the other section that um, goes over width and dimensional standards for cul-de-sac lots. And that is on the very next page, six point nine point eleven point three. Go down. Yeah, right there, number two cul-de-sac dimensions. Six point nine point twelve. So again, we added back the definition for regulations surrounding a family subdivision under the minor subdivision category. And
Matthew.
Yes, sir.
Four. Oh, on page thirty five, uh, just residential cluster subdivisions. Yeah, eight thousand. Is that supposed to be fifteen thousand?
Yes, anywhere you see residential cluster subdivision. Well, not necessarily. In all the other districts, it will be eight thousand. Only in agriculture.
Only in agriculture. Okay, well, I just I knew you said something about it. I just had me.
So it's going to remain eight thousand everywhere else.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, um, we also had a time limit on minor subdivisions, which violated the results in the developer having to bring them up to the standard of a major subdivision. So um, we thought about this a little bit and talked to Tom and I talked to Brian. Part of our fear is if we don't have a time limit in there, so the major subdivision, you know, biggest item is like paving the road, for example. So what we don't want to have is a situation where somebody does a minor subdivision and then comes back maybe a month or two later and then another, and then comes back and then another so that they stacked up minor subdivisions in order to get around the regulations of a major subdivision. So this adds a time limit in there where if they try to evade that time restriction, they would just automatically fall into the development standards of a major subdivision.
And where is that at?
That is in uh, six point nine point twelve. Yeah, right there.
Page forty.
The last paragraph before the next section. You see it's David. That was not the last. This is the last, it's the last paragraph before six point.
Oh, forty one, yeah.
Okay, sorry. And you might have duplicate page numbers in there. These are two different documents that we put together.
So that's a one year timeframe?
Uh, two year.
Two year. Okay, okay. Yeah, I was in the family subdivision part. All right. So basically if they try to do a second minor subdivision connected to that same development in less than two years after the first one was done, it would trigger them into the major subdivision threshold. That makes sense. That kind of alludes to that language that you should be, hear about um, common plan of development.
Right.
You know, as it relates to commercial or retail type construction here.
Yeah.
And out parsonage and stuff, so that, that makes sense. Yeah, okay.
All right, six point nine point thirteen. We reduced the requirement that open space in a cluster subdivision be none more than twenty five percent impervious surface. I don't recall, Amy, if you were here at the last meeting. But you had brought that up. Um, the last draft had fifty percent. And then the only other feedback I got after that was Tom, who thought fifty percent was excessive and bring it down to twenty five percent. So your pickleball court.
Pickleball community.
Yeah, yeah. You, you get up to twenty five percent and then you got to cap it, or you can apply for a variance.
All right.
All right, we also removed the requirement for conservation easements on open space to be um, so it was a requirement. Right? We added language that the county may require them if the land is determined to hold a unique cultural or historic um, natural or cultural significance. All right, coming to the end here, six point nine point fourteen. To clarify that construction plans are only required for class two and major subdivisions. In other words, if you're doing a minor class one subdivision, it's just a handful of lots. You don't have to submit the construction plans. Which is pretty much already practiced, but it's not stated in the ordinance. We also removed the requirement that subdivision proposals be approved uh, by environmental health and we changed that to ensure that they are given an opportunity to review which is more in line with the general statutes. And then we moved that clause to the general requirements. So again, those are all the changes just to the subdivision ordinance from the last time that you looked at which was just last month. Any questions there? All right, moving on to the last one, the supplemental definitions. So two very minor changes here. The only definitions that change uh, from the last time you looked at it. Uh, family care homes. There was a sentence in there regarding a half mile separation from other family care homes. That has been relocated to section five point seven. As I mentioned just a minute ago, five point seven deals with um, uh, accessory uses and permitted uses uh, with additional regulations. So it's been moved there. Same thing with home based businesses. So home based businesses, the cap on ten thousand square feet of usage for home based businesses has been moved to section five point seven as well. Everything else about the definition is exactly the same. And the thought bigger is in the definition, you're really just defining what it is. In the ordinance, that's when you're actually having the contours of the regulation. So things like separation, square footage, those types of things really belong in the ordinance more than they do in the definition. So that's all that I've got for all the summary on the sections. Regarding what we do from here. So we can talk about this and debate it. We had a little bit of debate before the meeting. But um, so as I mentioned, we're kind of packaging this up as a staff recommendation. This is short of an official vote to amend the ordinance. In my mind, what we're looking for here is more of a favorable or unfavorable approved, disapproved. You know, kind of an informal vote on what we presented that would obviously be part of what we present to the county commissioners. Comments or questions?
Just got one question, Matthew, on this, on between the uh, section five and section six, the subdivision regulations in the rule, the rule section.
Yep.
The um, watershed critical area language is not in the uh, is in the, it's in the subdivision that packs, like I mentioned before. Does it need to be? It's, it's what we sort of discussed a little bit earlier. I don't know if it should.
I don't know that it necessarily needs to be. I think there might be benefit in having, you know, whether you go to the subdivision ordinance or you go to the subdivision ordinance, having uniformity there.
Yeah, I don't want to create confusion.
Right. So I think there's some benefit there. I've got no problem in putting that in before we kind of send it along to the next step.
You don't think we have any conflicting information against the, there's a lot of regulation.
Uh, the goal is to not have any conflicting information.
Did you see any? Did you see any when you booked?
No, I don't. Yeah, I've also poured over this many, many times.
You don't see it, I think.
I'm by wine.
Okay.
I mean, you know, something like lane versus land is, you know, sneaking there, but um, I'm sure, yeah. Okay, we'll do our best to make sure that the cap says not in it.
I, I know you're going to have more interest in it than anybody because you might deal with it. Okay, sure. If you're comfortable, that's good.
I'm good with going ahead and let's just go forth uh, to commissioners for their review. As for my power, I think we've went through all of this and the, we've all discussed this and it's, I think each section has been thoroughly discussed. I mean, you know, I really believe it's a in my opinion, it's a good document that we could move forward on and and try to accomplish what we're trying to get, get done. That's, that's my thoughts.
Looking for favorable unfavorable type of comments. Um, I said earlier that, that um, hey consultant that came in several years ago, some of the folks on, on the, on the commissioner board had a chance to go through that process and the difficulties of it was a really bad, bad plan. Uh, this, I appreciate the work that's been put into this and the time of consideration both from the staff and also from the planning board to be able to put something together. Uh, and it's better than that, but it's still, in my opinion, not, not good. And mainly from the perspective of the, the, the lot sizes are too large, in my opinion. If we're looking at um, districts or zoning, um, the rural residential section is, is too small. Uh, there, there's pieces of this that I felt like maybe ten years ago would have, would have been appropriate potentially to discuss. But today doesn't meet our current needs nor our future needs. Uh, and so I would be in the unfavorable side of it. But with that being said, I know we've had good, good conversations on this and I appreciate the, the thoughtfulness that's gone into it and those that support it. Uh, we're all coming from the place of trying to do what's right for our county and it's just my opinion is that this is not a good plan for that.
Well, I, I had a question, then that statement prompted another question.
You got two.
Yeah, so now. So you don't think this plan is a good plan for the county?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay. Do you have like one or two top reasons? Let me understand why you might think.
Do you have like one or two top reasons, help me understand why you might think that?
Sure, I feel like the lot size is both in, both in the, in the agricultural district and also the rural residential district are too large.
Too large, okay.
Two acres and then the five acres, I mean, you think, think about five acres, just, just, and, and from the perspective of. One, the, the undue, undue, um, pressure that puts on a property owner who wants to sell their property.
Sure.
Two, if you buy that property as a homeowner, you got five acres to keep up with. And then that, that in and of itself creates visual impacts, maybe environmental impacts too.
I got you.
Uh, and also, um, looking at the map. It's just, I feel like, feel like that real section, if we're gonna do zoning, that real section is just too small. And it does, doesn't allow for, for the, the need growth that I believe our, our county is gonna, gonna need right now and also going forward.
I got you, okay, no, I remember the lot size being a sticking point, because we talked about that at length.
Yeah, I mean, but, but the last lot size that we did, I guess, was, was one and a half acres or something like that, uh, last September. And to me, that was pushing it as well.
Yeah.
Uh, and looking, looking at, insert scenarios at five acres and a minimum of two acres, uh, you know, that's, that's, that's just not something that me personally could be, could be supportive of.
No, okay, no, thanks for sharing that, I just.
Sure.
Was having an understanding, hell.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I didn't explain.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm sure you did explain it, I was.
Yeah, I've, I've been through this a couple, a couple of times over the past few months and then shared my thoughts on it, and so maybe I didn't go into it as much detail, because I have expressed that in the past.
Sure.
But those, those are my main concerns, and that doesn't preclude the fact that I appreciate the work that's been done on this, because I know a lot of work went into putting this together. And, and I don't, I don't approach this, um, approach this with, 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 with a seriousness that I appreciate that. But also the point that I just don't feel like that looking at where our county is at today, where it's gonna be at, be going in the future, and looking, looking at specifically these lot sizes is, is carrying us in the direction we need to go.
I follow you, yeah, I got you, okay. No, thank you, um, so the other question I had, um, I was looking at page forty-four. Under the, uh. Cemental procedures for the plastic plans.
Yep.
Um, section two for construction plans, the second paragraph calls out. Plan skills. Acceptable plan skills.
Yeah.
In one to twenty, is there any reason why one to twenty plan skill is not acceptable? But that's a pretty common scale.
Yeah. You know, that language is copied verbatim from the current subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
I will admit, I don't know, and, you know. I, I think, uh, it's safe to say that as an engineer, you probably know a fair bit more about.
Yeah.
You know, that type of scaling than I would, but it, you know, if that makes sense for you and the rest of the board, I'm more than happy to change. Would you see it being added in there or supplement one to ten out and put one to twenty in?
No, I think one to ten is fine, you know, calling it one to ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, all those are common. Sixty is also common, um, you know, but just depending, you know, obviously your smaller scales show more details, so stopping at forty or fifty is, is totally fine, um. Out of curiosity. Are we able to pull up, how detailed or how extensive is, uh? I think it calls out reference in appendix B or, uh, appendix P. As far as the plan requirements, how, how extensive is that appendix?
Not very.
Can we pull that up real quick and look at it?
Uh, Keyshawn, are you able to pull up appendix P from the current U D O? I got, I've got it in front of me right here, um.
I just wanted.
I can tell you definitively that. After we get through, you know, we were on, going piece by piece through the ordinance until we.
So, yeah, so that was.
Started working this, as we get to the appendices in the back, it is definitely part of my plan. To, to modify those and improve those well.
Okay. Thank you, yeah.
It's me right there. So add as one to general. Add the one to twenty and add one to sixty.
I think stopping at one to fifty is fine, one, one to twenty is just common, so. I think you'll be fine just adding that one. I think that's just the minor.
Okay.
Item.
And I would say.
Yeah, no, that's pretty common, yeah, that's pretty common.
Look to ensure that it is to scale, we don't really.
Yeah, yep.
Look at the ratio.
Yep. Yeah, there, there, you'll have some issues where they'll call out a scale on the plan. And then you actually try to measure it and it's completely off, like the, the. Title block doesn't match with the actual.
Yeah.
Scale of the drawing is, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's all, that's a whole nother discussion.
That's when you keep turning that thing over and.
Yeah.
Find what works.
Or you try to make something work, yeah, exactly.
Alright, any other comments?
That was all I had.
You're up. Okay. Alright, well, in that case, we're done. For this.
So since we're done with this, I kind of, kind of, just kind of circle back to the next state, the next steps, um, you mentioned this goes before the county commissioners as a staff, um, proposal. Uh, but there, there's no public hearing.
Correct.
At that, at that point.
Correct.
At what point would trigger a pu- a public hearing, or will, will there be a public hearing, because if you look at this, uh, there's pretty much nobody in these sections, it's not gonna be touched by this in some way.
Yeah.
And, and it just concerns me that, that the public wouldn't have a chance to have some conversation about it potentially, uh, unless I'm looking at it incorrectly.
So, nobody in the sections have touched by it.
So I'm talking, if you live, if you live in these sections, you'll be touched by, 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 by these things in some way. And you not had the opportunity to have some conversation publicly about it.
Yeah, so procedurally, when this goes to the commissioners and we make the presentation for the staff recommendation. They cannot, even if they want to enact it at that point.
Okay.
They would have to say, this is great, or this is near to great enough that we want to move forward with this. You would then have to come back to the planning board for an official review and recommendation, you would have to issue a consistency statement. In line with one sixty D article six, part six or whatever. Um, and package of that statement with these changes to them. Then they have a public hearing, then they take an official vote.
Okay, so I'll repeat this back to you so I understand, first step is staff recommendation, county commissioners look at it, then they, they, uh, make. One way or the other, it, it, it ultimately goes back to us.
If they want it to.
If, if they want it to, or they, if they approve it just as is that night. It's.
They can't, they approve.
So it, so it, so what, so, okay, got you.
Yeah, it can't be a procedure. He's got to be a public hearing before.
And no action basically means we don't want to hear this, go away.
Sure. I couldn't say that, yeah.
But a staff recommendation gives them the ability for input essentially.
Yeah. And then they give. It's nice, we appreciate all your hard work, but. Uh, we just don't think it's, it's time to do this right now, and so.
Yeah.
Got you, I just want to be sure I, I understood correctly, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, my mind was the process, would we go forward maybe without any public input?
Right.
And that, that was concerning, but I appreciate the clarity there.
Sure, yeah, no, state law does not allow land development ordinances to be amended without first an official approval. Or a vote from the planning board with, with a consistency statement.
Okay, perfect.
Then it has to go to the governing body, and they have to have a public hearing, and then they take official action.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Law requires that whole process.
I feel better about things, I appreciate that.
So that's why I said the staff recommendation is more informal.
Okay.
Is that pretty much a thirty-day notice that they have to give for the public to?
Um, the, the newspaper ad has to run between ten and twenty-five days prior to the public.
I got you, okay.
But there's actually no requirement, like if you guys were to officially approve this, it doesn't necessarily immediately have to go to them, the state law doesn't spell out. The time, it's assumed that it's gonna go as soon as possible.
I got you.
But, um. There's no requirement that it has to go immediately.
Okay.
So to say those words the other way. The official action that the commissioners could in fact take on this at their meeting would be to do nothing.
Okay.
Sure, they could do that.
And, and then it's dead.
Yeah.
But if they decide to move forward with it, then he comes back, cycles through here again.
Yeah, I, I see it that they have multiple options, they could say, you know, this is great, we want to move forward, how do we do that? And then that's when we talk about the, the whole legal official process.
Okay.
They could say, this is interesting, we want to see more tweaks, all that good stuff. In that case, though, at some point, it would still have to come back before the planning board for official review, recommendation and consistency statement. Or they could say, you know, we appreciate all your effort, but we're just not interested in entertaining this right now.
Yes, and I'll like that, well, this is coming back to us, and I'll likely at some point, and more than likely to.
If they, if they.
Into effect.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
If they approve of it in any fashion, it'll have to come back before the planning.
Okay, got you, thank you.
Yeah.
And at, at that time is when we'll make an official. Uh, vote.
That's exactly right.
And, and that. That's when, if, if we pass it. It passes and then it goes back. To the back.
Ping pong ball.
Yeah, that's right, goes back to the commissioners to sit to public hearing.
Okay.
To.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit cumbersome in terms of the.
Efficiency of government.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely cumbersome in terms of the procedure, but we just want to give them maximum flexibility to do with this what they want, once it gets to them.
Okay, makes sense, thank you.
And, and all of that cumbersome. Although it wasn't done initially, but is to prevent what you're concerned about happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just misunderstood the way he described it, and I appreciate the, the discussion and clear, clearing that up, because that makes me feel a lot better about the process going forward, so, thank you.
I know we got some comments, are you all gonna view an official approval or disapproval or favorable unfavorable? Kind of a vote? If they're one by one, or? Tell me to step out of the room and.
Mr. Pete.
Talk about, no, I'm gonna hear how.
He watched the video later, so he'll get.
That's right, yeah, we gotta transfer out of there.
Well, I think we know what, what's going on here, but tonight, we got six people. And we're looking at, uh, five to one. If I'm, if I'm understanding this right, you're, you're alright with it?
Yeah, what, what we can, yeah.
You're, you're, you're good, yeah. You're alright.
Yes, sir.
You're alright, you're not.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we, we, we're five to one, if somebody wants to make a motion and a second, we'll make an official vote. If you want a general consensus, it's five to one, uh, how, however formal you want this to be, we'll accommodate that. You, you're not gonna change your opinion.
Yes, sir.
Based on the level of formality.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's five to one.
Okay. Yeah.
You need official.
I don't know that we need an official.
Well, that's just, just a recommendation.
Right.
It's mine.
It'll be, it'll be in the minutes that it's five to one favorable.
We, we got eighty-five percent consensus on this tonight.
Good math. It's great math, it's impressive.
And as government, as, as good, as government goes, eighty-five percent is a favorable.
So that's all I've got for old business, and I appreciate you guys. Working with us through all the months and entertaining everything and asking good questions on.
Thank you, and we appreciate all the work.
Diligent.
Been putting it from the staff. I mean, uh, I know y'all had to go through a lot of research and.
Yeah.
And, uh.
That's for sure.
Writing maps, getting charts, comparisons for this and drawing diagrams.
Yeah. I agree, yeah, boy. The, the editing on that, um, on that road, or the fire marshal road diagram, that thing almost killed me a few times.
Oh, goodness.
Well, I'm looking at a blank for new business unless somebody else has got some. We won't spend a lot of time on there in an effort to not have some, you got any announcements?
No, I don't have any announcements, um, as I mentioned, the, um. Uh, pedestrian maps for Saks Bahal and a couple other areas were included in the Burlington Graham twenty fifty. Master plan, so that's actually been a pretty big thing we've been working on behind the scenes to get that in there. Those types of projects aren't even eligible to be funded or even come to life unless it's first in that plan, so the fact that we have it in there is a huge, huge first step. And, um, I meant to make it available tonight, but I can bring that map and show you guys that map at the next meeting.
I find it remarkable that we're talking about putting sidewalks on Saks Bahal, where we don't have full sidewalks in Burlington. Or Graham, but.
Well, they're not as my jurisdiction.
Yeah, I got you, I'm.
Yeah. That's all day, so.
That's your bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I get where you're coming from, Saks Bahal's a nice community, I'm not trying to knock Saks Bahal, I just find it the irony.
Yeah.
That you can go down Church Street and walk in the road.
Well, yeah, uh, I would have to take a little closer look at that, and I can send you the map, I can share the map with you too, because that, there are some other, you know, pedestrian enhancements in those areas, I just don't pay. That much close attention to them, because I'm focused on the unincorporated areas. You know, but, um.
I, I mean, it's, it's interesting, um, from a developer standpoint, when you're required to put sidewalks in, but they don't attach to anything.
Yeah.
And it's just, there's sidewalks to no.
Sidewalks to nowhere. Payment in lieu.
Yeah, that is exactly, exactly, I mean, Graham Huppdale Road is another great one that has a lot of traffic, but doesn't have complete sidewalks.
So piggybacking off of that, we were actually awarded a grant from the V G M P O, uh, a couple of months ago to hire an engineer to go to Saks Bahal to make an official recommendation. For sidewalks and traffic calming measures, uh, down in that area. What are you laughing about?
Well, in two thousand and eleven. Saks Bahal had a traffic committee.
Okay.
Which made a formal report with information from highway patrol, sheriff's department and some others. And those crosswalks and the paint in the road and the thirty mile an hour speed limit.
Mm-hmm.
Is a result of that work now fourteen years ago.
Okay. That's good.
And there won't no grant money involved with that.
So, uh, the, the. Process is, and, well, it's a cumbersome process, we have to have an official report for an engineer. And we have it, have to have it on the official maps of the twenty fifty plan. In order for then it to be eligible to be voted up and ultimately funded. So we're just knocking on the door of eligibility.
You're just checking the boxes to get eligible.
Exactly, yeah, I mean, it's, and the paperwork, the paperwork and just eligibility alone is ridiculous.
But that's.
There's one particular stretch in Saks Bahal that does in fact need a sidewalk.
Oh, sure.
And I would just love to be there when the engineer draws up where it's gonna be.
Why are you looking at me?
Well, you're the engineer in the room. And I don't know if it's gonna end up being a overhead bridge, or if it's gonna be an underground tunnel.
Hmm.
But.
Don't want to get underground tunnel.
The, the reason that they, yeah, uh-huh, reason that they need it is because of the traffic, there's no place for it, and when folks decide that we're going over there. They just walk in the road.
Right, well, isn't so the terrain there challenging too, right, like it's slopes and. Embankments to fight, you, you have just enough room for the road.
It's not gonna be a ADA compliant sidewalk.
Well, if it goes in, it's required to be, right?
Yeah.
Well, when you've got an elevation point here and one here and the distance is not sufficient.
Well, you gotta ramp it and hand rail it and put. Flat spaces in it, you, you know.
They'll be chasing that grade all around this little bit.
And, and, and your width is this, and it's full of road. Which is the reason we need a sidewalk, because folks are walking in the road. And you'd go to put flat faces, well, that's using up your.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Really, you know, words.
Hmm.
In the meantime, you can't walk from the pickleball court on Graham Huppdale to Walmart to get drank in the back, because there's a sidewalk.
Oh. You put it like that.
Now we have a problem. Okay, we get a motion, we can stop all this.
Motion to adjourn. And say.
All in favor?
Okay, okay. Otherwise, everyone gets into business, they really hate quite our business.
We, we're going, going.